Okay, folks, it's six o'clock and I'm calling the board back into open session. Take this opportunity to welcome our visitors tonight. Glad you're here with us and we hope that you will join us in trying to make our school system one of the best in the state. Copies of our agenda are available in the foyer for your convenience. At this time, we're at item number eight, public comment. Public comment is limited up to three minutes per speaker. The Anson County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about matters of public concern, the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational program, school facilities, or other matters. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This part of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public, however obscene or vulgar statements, personal attacks, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. As per board practice, the board will not address or respond to public comment except for clarification until the superintendent has an opportunity to investigate the presented issues and/or the board reviews the issue with legal counsel if warranted. We had nobody to sign up for public comment tonight, so we'll go to item number eight, the chairs report. And at this time, I want to recognize Mr. Jamie Calder, one of our county commissioners. We're glad you're here tonight. Appreciate you coming out. Also, at this time, I would like to ask my colleagues, those who are in attendance tonight, and those who may be watching with us, to join with me for a moment of silence for two fine gentlemen who have passed away in recent days. I think you know Dr. Jim Sims. He was a former principal at Peachland School. He was a principal at Anson Junior High School. He was a former associate superintendent, superintendent, a member of this Board of Education, and also a county commissioner. So we have him and we also understand that Mr. Richard Allen, who is a former mayor of Peachland, he's been a member of the town council there, and who was also a member of the Anson County Board of Education for many years, passed away this morning. So we have two former colleagues who have passed away and we would like to take a moment to honor them. So if you would join me now for a moment of silence to commemorate the work those gentlemen did for our school system. For information, I do have some minimal information regarding both of those gentlemen's preparations that are made for their funerals. Dr. Sims will have his visitation on Wednesday, the 27th, at two o'clock with a funeral following at three o'clock at Levis. And Mr. Allen will have visitation on Thursday, August 28th, from five to seven at night, and it's also at Levis. And the funeral then will be at Peachland Baptist Church on August 29th, which would be Friday at 10:00 a.m. with a great side service to follow. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask my colleagues, do any of you have any questions regarding your ability to attend any of the activities in our schools? I was not able to get out to any of the school openings, but were any of our folks?
I was at Peachland-Poketon this morning, followed by Anson Middle. Things seemed to be going smoothly both places. And then went to see Ansonville this afternoon and a lot of kids were excited, still smiling, and said they had a good first day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Pratt?
This morning, I visited Waysboro Middle School and I think I had a wonderful day, a nice start, good kickoff for today.
I was fortunate to attend the convocation last week. Also went to a couple of open houses, I think three or four open houses this week. Saw some good and some room for improvement, but it looked like all our employees, our staff are doing an excellent job and I appreciate every one of you all.
And Dr. Truman, in addition to some of these things that have been mentioned, I got the opportunity to participate in Chalk the Walk, which I think is a phenomenal way of welcoming students back to school and giving great, undevotional kind of inspirational ways for them to walk into school this morning.
That's great. I had opportunity to attend the conversation, but I did not have our kind of busy doing the first day of school. Thank you very much. At this time, that's all I have for the chairs report, so we're at item number nine, superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair and other board leaders, I thank you for the opportunity to provide a report. I want to start tonight with the exciting audit presentation. Mr. Wicker's here and I know he travels, so Mr. Nick Wicker, if you'll make yourself available to provide a summary of your report. Ms. Drake's here and then I have some information if necessary to provide any kind of clarification. If there's any concerns, I'll be able to speak to those or identify them myself. But Mr. Wicker, thank, we know you have traveled and that, so we want to get you out of the gate first, so, not that we don't want you to stay with us, you'll be glad, I'd be happy for you to do so if you need to.
Fair enough. First and foremost, Dr. Truman, I'd rally with team members of the board and Ms. Drake, I appreciate each and every one of you for the opportunity to have served the Anson County Board of Education and we wish you all nothing but success moving forward. So on the screen, we have the audit report summary. All right. That's the, this is the table of contents and so we'll flip into where our services perform. We're already there. So obviously, the service performed, we performed an annual audit of the financial statements and we assisted with the preparation of the financial statements and the note disclosures and we've reported to management our observations and control environment for recommendations and improvements. Consultation on accounting matters as requested and attendance as board meetings as requested. So under the Yellow Book 2018, I'm happy to report, happy to report that there are no factors that have impaired our independence and thus we were able to appand over the financial statements. So for your opinions, we expressed an unmodified opinion over your basic financial statements. That is what we commonly refer to as a clean opinion. That's what you're striving for. We did test four major programs from a single audit standpoint and those were Child Nutrition Cluster, COVID-19 Education Stabilization Fund, the State Public School Fund, and the Vocational Education Statements of Employment. So within your financial statements, the GASB requires some supplementary information and that consists of the management discussion and analysis and then your pension and OPEB-related schedules as well. So I want to point out that RSI is different than your basic financial statements in that we did not audit RSI and thus we have not expressed any assurance over those. And then your individual fund schedules, your individual funds and then your budgetary schedules, those are in the back and those are different from required supplementary information and we have appand over those. So deficiencies and recommendations, we did assess three material weaknesses. 2024-001, excessive expenditures over appropriations, that is a repeat finding from the prior year. And then 2024-002, internal controls over capital assets. And lastly, 2024-003, general ledger. I'm happy to talk about those now specifically or we can wait until we get to the AUC 265 to discuss. That's ultimately up to you guys. Any preference? All right, we'll move forward with that. So we did not note any significant deficiencies and we have no other recommendations at this So the next letter on the screen, this is what we call an AUC 260 letter and this is required communication with governance at the completion of the audit. I'm not going to read this letter to you verbatim. It's more or less the same as last year. I do want to point out a couple of important things though. So there are no new accounting policies were adopted and the application of existing policies was not changed during June 30th, 2024. And then the key estimates in your financial statements is the estimation of depreciation based on management's estimation of the useful life of said asset. And then the current portion of compensated absences. We encounter no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. There are some uncorrected misstatements that are attached to the back of this letter and so that is called a POGI. It means past adjusting journal entry. So when we conduct an audit, there's a threshold called materiality that predicates pretty much everything that we do. And so items that are under a certain threshold, we say not considered material and we move on without any further investigation. And we are pleased to report there are no disagreements with management over the application of accounting procedures. We did obtain a signed management representation letter. And then the last thing I want to point out is that actual summary of uncorrected misstatements. So the misstatements that we identified and passed on was an overstatement of cash in 11, 10, 12. That account's going to be going away, so nothing to worry about there. And then an understatement of commodities inventory. So we're talking about $1,764. We did not need to do any further investigation on that. We just had to note it and list it. Any questions about that? The next letter that we have is the AUC 265 and this is the communication of material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. In this case, we did not assess any significant deficiencies. So for the budgetary finding, we assessed that due to the general fund, the instructional services was over spent $12,928 and ancillary services were overspent $5,718. If it had just been the general fund, it would have just been a significant deficiency instead of a material weakness. And then the child nutrition fund operating expenditures were over expended by $58,387. And I want to point out that the majority of that was due to journal entries that we record to adjust for pension and OPEB-related benefits. That's something that you really can't budget for. So we typically recommend those line items, you have at least a 10% cushion and there just wasn't enough cushion to cover that hit this year. The internal controls of, controls over capital assets, we identified $385,823 of expenditures within governmental funds and $14,871 of expenses within school food services fund that met the established capitalization threshold but were erroneously recorded as current period expenditures and expenses. So during our testing, we noted that these assets were noted as capital assets. So that control was working. The part that failed is they didn't actually get added as capital assets. And then the general ledger finding was just due to an abundant amount of journal entries recorded to correct some balances. Do you all have any questions about any of those?
I have one, well, maybe a comment or just clarification is that on the last one, when you talked about the general, the capital assets, obviously we overlooked that one and they should have been added and would that should have been added to the general ledger, is that what you're saying or no?
No, those are two separate findings. And one thing that I did leave out is there was turnover in a key position who had been doing that for many years. And so I think that actually led to these things being marked as capital assets, but ultimately not winding up on the listing.
Thank you.
So that's really what led to that. Any questions on the general ledger finding? Perfect. So getting into your graphs. It's a great catch. I don't know if y'all saw that, but I knocked my water bottle off and caught it. Skills. Your governmental fund balance for the last five fiscal years, your restricted fund balance had a decrease of $876,398 as compared to 2023. Your assigned fund balance had an increase of $726,489 and your unassigned fund balance had a decrease of $765,461. So in totality, your governmental fund balance decreased $915,370 as compared to FY23. And I'd like to point out here, you're restricted. What really drives change there is the biggest part of that is you're restricted by state stabilization and so there's law that says if you have this amount of receivables, you have to have this X dollar amount set aside as restricted fund balance. And the assigned, that's going to be your subsequent year's expenditures. And then your unassigned, that's what's available for you to actually appropriate from. Any questions on that? The next graph we'll look at is your governmental fund balance for the last five fiscal years. So your general fund had a decrease of $789,417 and all other funds had a decrease of $125,953. So in total, like on the last slide, $915,370 decrease as compared to FY23. So your general fund's fund balance restricted had a decrease of $23,956. There was zero change in assigned and unassigned had a decrease of $765,461. This is a result of operating, of operations for the year. In totality, your general fund had a decrease of $789,417 as compared to FY23. And again, I'd like to point out the unassigned portion, that is what is available to appropriate from and spend. Your governmental revenues by source, the state of North Carolina revenues decreased Your Anson County revenues decreased $17,653. Your U.S. government revenues increased $2,423,523 and your other revenues increased So in total, as compared to FY23, your revenues increased $1,659,596. The next graph is just a picture of your total revenues and shows it going up in an Your child nutrition net position for the last five fiscal years and FY24, there was a decrease of $386,48 in net position. And on the next slide, looking at your child nutrition fund revenues by source, food sales had an increase of $53,589. Your federal reimbursements increased $52,136 and your other increased $719. So in totality, your child nutrition revenues by source increased $106,444. In FY24, your free and reduced lunch revenue as a percentage of total revenue decreased 1.8% and is at 87.8%. Your individual instructional school services net position had a decrease of $40,255 in And your supplemental services net position had a decrease of $8,461 in FY24. So that is all of the slides. Do you all have any questions pertaining to the FY2024 audit? No? Again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to be here night first and also for the opportunity to have served the Anson County Board of Education. We wish you guys nothing but the best moving forward. I hope you all have a blessed evening and everybody has safe travels getting home tonight.
Before you depart, I just wanted to tell you personally, I've really enjoyed working with you and I appreciate you very much and I know that you're moving on to do other work for other systems, but grateful to how it is that you interacted with us and we're patient with me as the new superintendent coming here. So thank you, Nick. Safe travels to you and appreciate all you do. Good luck with your work. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, thank you for coming tonight and making your presentation.
Like amazed, Mr. Wicker, you're doing the right, you're going the right way. You're doing, yes, sir. You may find something in the fridge in there too, I guess. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about just a couple of other things here and I think it warrants our attention, obviously. This is an exciting day. It's always a little different, but really kind of cool in its own right that we're, we come together on the second year in a row that I've been blessed to be here with you, that we've had a board meeting on the first day of school and so it makes for a long day, but also, you know, it allows us to be immediately engaging. And so board leaders, I appreciate already the conversations that we've had and what you've shared about your visits to the school when you're able to do that. We understand you live busy lives, but thank you for doing that. Today, you know, I could, I could have all of our principal leaders that are here in attendance tonight that they could probably talk at length, so we're not going to open that door up. Sorry about that, guys. You know, I love you, but we're not going to do that. But we, I have seen several principals today, there's at least three, four of them in here today and we'll get to the rest of you tomorrow, so look out, the bald headed man's coming. But we are, I was just so thrilled, obviously, for some of the same, I don't want to repeat and repeat what you all have shared about your visits, but I do want to reinforce this that I think it, in Ansonville, we only have one crier that I know about and she took a little bit of consoling and then we had, you know, that kindergarten classroom, what happens there, but we had kids talking about school life a little differently than maybe I, maybe it's just in my mind that was happening, but I just felt like, I don't think so though, because I had real meaningful conversations with kids and that's where I like to gravitate to and I want to hear about what they think and what they're prepared for first and no offense to anyone else when I do that, but that's, that's who we serve and we're here to do that. And I was just thrilled to hear some of the commentary and some of the excitement, of course, and enthusiasm for new day, new clothes, new shoes, all that kind of stuff. But what I really liked hearing was when students start expressing how much they missed being in schools. And, you know, that, I hope we never take that lightly, ever, ever, because when a child tells you anything, it's pretty straight up and it's not pretentious. So when a child tells you, regardless of the age, even when they get up there, you know, hanging out with you, Mr. Jackson, or hanging out with Mr. Stinson at the high school, you know, they, they still will let you know what they mean and what they feel. And they may do it differently, Mr. Stinson, in your hallway than they did over in the primary school today with Dr. Gerald, but they still nevertheless, nonetheless, they, they give you, they give you what they have, not what you want to hear and what they mean. So all that's say, I was just heartened by the fact that our kids seem to desire and want to be engaged in school life again. Some of that I know we can attribute to boredom and I'm realistic about that, but some of it I think we can, we can attribute to belonging, purpose, and desire to grow. And they may not articulate it that way, but that's what I saw today and, and I think I see that every day, but it's always cool to have them back. I miss those guys and I know you all did, I miss them so much. It's like soon as they leave, I want them, come back, come back. And so I just was real pleased with that. So that, that part has happened. We, we, the school want to give kudos to all of our staff. Lots of, you know, as, as Ms. Gibson pointed out in her comments, I would echo those, that we have a lot of improvements to make. There's some things that we've noticed in our registration process and a lot of debriefing that Dr. Thorpe and others on staff here with our principal leadership and overall leadership team that we need to discuss, because we're always going to get better, because school improvement is always about what? Always about people improvement. And so what we do from a person, from a person's standpoint is we got to get better and we have to pay attention and we don't need to be offended by that and waste time worrying about that and pointing fingers and, so none of that, but I know that's not to the degree you were talking about, Ms. Gibson, but I wanted to highlight and reinforce what you said about that there are things that we obviously logistically need to consider for our future and we will do that. We will not let those go by without having discourse and conversation and improvement plans in place to make sure we do that. Having said that, overall, it's been spectacular and it's been smooth and it was just as if in some ways, I know this is a trite way of looking at it, but it was in some ways as if the kids hadn't left. And that is telling to me. So just from my vantage, I'm not saying anyone else has to agree with that at all. You know how I feel about that team, but I, but I do think that that's, that's what I saw today, that's what I experienced and I made sure I didn't have rose colors on. So I wanted to be realistic about that and I'm sure I'll see that in the sights tomorrow that I didn't get to visit today. So having said all that, I do, I do think that we've had a positive start. I know convocation was a little different. It was a little bear down on some breakout sessions. There's some things we learned from that that weren't necessarily effective. Had some real honest conversations with folks about that and I'm pleased to, to report that as much as I'm pleased to report enthusiasm and excitement and purpose toward what it is we're going to do for this year for our kids, whether it's through mentoring or just taking care of kids, everybody in our wheelbarrow. And I think that was a strong message, board leadership. I know all of you can't be there. You have this thing called W O R K that gets in, gets a little bit in your way and I know we'd like to step away from that at times, but we all have responsibilities, but board leaders, it was real significant to guests and our, our home folks alike that you were present and you being there and engaging, laughing, smiling, reading, being positive. Mr. Calder, I know from a commissioner's standpoint, you had other obligations, but you showing up was noted. And so I'd like to thank you for that and for the others who were there that didn't have responsibilities with the chamber and other things that you had, but for you to show up like that, I just, I think I mentioned that to you, but it was noted and appreciated. So thank you for that. That, that suggests a commitment. Our theme, not theme, I know it sounds thematic, so I need to be okay with saying that. I know some of you fussed at me about that. I want to be crystal clear that we're not about themes and slogans necessarily, but I do want the umbrella of the whole notion that school, public school communities are priceless, that's with intentionality and it's with sincerity. There's, there's no way you can put a price tag on our school communities. Alls you got to do is walk in one school for one minute and if you don't think that way, let's talk, let's process, because our public school communities are priceless and it's a call to action for us to invest. And I'm not talking about just investing money. I'm talking about resources, time, energy, focus, priority, because the lion's share of our, like I said Tuesday, the lion's share of our community sits, rests, breathes, and lives in public school communities. And whether they're in our schools or not, they still are involved, are still the hub of that. Largest employer, have the most responsibility, we travel the most miles, correct? We, we offer the most meals, we meet kids where they are, just as they are, every day. Nothing of that can be taken lightly, none of that can be taken lightly. And so I'm not lecturing, I just want to reemphasize as we start another school year, as we've already engaged another school year, that I'm just asking us to consider, you don't have to agree and you don't have to follow, I'm not asking any bandwagon fans, I'm just asking for the community to look through those lenses, to consider how priceless our public schools are and our communities and also to whom much is given, much is required. We have a lot of responsibility and that's why we thank our parents. Every time I get an opportunity, you're going to hear me thank our parents for allowing us to invest in their children, because they don't have to, have choice. us to invest in their children, because they don't have to, have choice. So for them to do that puts a lot of responsibility on us, of course, but it's a, it's not an obligation. It's a joy. It's a privilege. And so that's the kind of mindset I'm just asking the community in general and asking us to continue, let's please don't deviate for a minute. You might be able to say it better than I can and I, I will back out of the way and let you do that, want you to do that. But in some way, I just want to communicate from my role, how important I think our communities are in our public schools. So it's time for us to invest and maybe it's just to invest with more intentionality and more focus and priority. We're going to continue working on, I'd already mentioned this to you, board leaders, we're working on, Dr. Thorpe and I are already busy. He's particularly busy working on some strategic planning tenants that will come into place so that we'll be able to make a really good plan that's actionable, that has smart goals, that has things that can be obtained and, and that we can actually have factors in front of us that no matter, that no matter what, that we do have at least some semblance of control over. You know, I can't read your writing. Yes, he's come, that's next. It's right here. No, it's right here, right here. It's coming next. That's next. Thank you for taking me there. So that gets me off that, that little whatever I was on right there. It wasn't intended to be anything like a pedestal. It was more about just emphasis as we start the school year. So we want to be strategic. We, we don't want to talk a lot about what we're going to do. We want to do it. And that's the mindset of this leadership team. And I felt it, I'm seeing it and I respect you for it and I respect for your commitment that you're going to help instill in our other colleagues, that this is what we're going to do. We're not going to chat about it. We're just going to do it. We're going to take care of things and this is what we're going to become. And so in that vein, I do want to ask Dr. Thorpe to stand up and when he does, I hope his head doesn't hit the ceiling. But I like to mess with him. I have, I tell, I, I'm tempted to say shorty, but I, yeah, he's a bigger man than I am, so I got to be careful with that. But he has been a delight to work with. His, his heart's in the right place. I can feel it and I know it. We've had some meaningful conversations, albeit not many yet, but I think there are many to come. I know he has been with other folks on our staff and started talking with you and just point blank getting after it. So that's what he's about and I wanted to introduce him to you tonight. He has had a, just multiple opportunities and background. It's just been, it's really way too many to list in terms of his accent, anywhere from, you know, school improvement initiatives and he's really particularly fond of and skilled at professional learning communities. And so that's the reason in Ms. McLendon and some of others and some of you in here have already had some really cool conversations and we already had some PLC going on at Morven today that was, the planning was very impressive from what I understand, what transpired even after I left, but the planning for that and the thought behind that, Mrs. Harrell was very good. And I was just very pleased to hear that. And thank you for making sure that our colleagues are focused and understand that. But Dr. Thorpe's background in PLC and, and some of the other matters, social justice, his work even most recently as a high school principal, he just carries a lot with him of experience. So he understands school life, he gets it. He acts like he acts, he likes us a little bit already. So I'll shut that down and if you'll come forward and just say a few words and if there are any questions or welcoming thoughts that the board leadership would like to give to Dr. Thorpe, this would be a good time to do that. And I'll shut my mic off so you can have at it.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Ratliff and Dr. Truman and the board. I'll just tell you, I started at the high school today and saw Principal Stinson in action and what a wonderful man. He knows all the students by their name. He had conversations with them about graduation and classes. It was very, they had a really good processes and procedures in place to help those students. So the high school's in good hands and we're moving right along there. And I went to the early college as well, Ms. Decker, and what a nice place. Students were happy and excited to see one another and as soon, and you know, you think, okay, early college, small, you know, they got it under control, but as soon as it was time for passing, no bell, all this, all the staff were in the hallway and greeting the students and making sure they moved in an orderly manner, even though it's a small place. And so very good there as well. And I also visited Mr. Corey at transportation. He's already been on the phone with the Department of Transportation. He's had, what, three or four calls? They've moved him around a little bit because the high school left turn lane gives you exactly 10 seconds. And they've put that new barrier, I guess, so you can't get, you know, cut to get into the seven 11 gas station. So the buses are backing up 74. So he's gonna see if he can get the stop light from 10 seconds to about 60 seconds. So good work on that so we don't clog up traffic and we get students to, to school on time. So we appreciate that. And I also saw Mr. Adams and do the afternoon release and process and procedures in place. School starts on day one in Anson County Schools because academics was happening. So that was really good.
I do have a question for you. Did Mr. Adams have a pressure washer or a weed eater in his hand?
He had a hard hat on.
Every time I see him, he's covered in grass or water. So anyway.
But he was out there.
I had to get that in, Mr. Adams.
Yep, he was out there with the parents, greeting the parents, the buses. We had the buses coming in. So all of our curriculum instruction staff went to every school and so I appreciate all of them. And our, I told the principals, our job, we're not here to give you all kinds of suggestions, we're here to support you. So thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Ratliff and board, and we're looking forward to 179 more great days of school in Anson County Schools.
Board, would you like to say anything? Dr. Thorpe, on behalf of the board, welcome to Anson County Schools. We are so glad you're here and we really appreciate what you can bring to the table to help our kids. And by the way, we want to know, can you teach our big men how to block out under the basket?
Yes. I asked him, I asked him if he could still do a drop step. I think he can, so on the board.
Well, I was sizing up, you know, as the, at the high school, I was asking and saying who plays and who do we need to recruit to play, both the boys and the girls. So Coach, Coach Stinson and I are on that to help, help our teams out. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, sir.
Folks, we are at item 10, action items, and we have two items under consent. One is A zero one, the personnel report. And the second is A zero two, a sole source form administration recommends approval from Reality Works Incorporated. Now, so do I have a motion to approve the consent items? A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent items, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Pose same sign. Hearing none, the consent items are approved. We have no old business or new business and we're going to ask in just a minute to go back into closed session, because there's some further things we want to talk about. But first, I haven't had a chance to do this. Do any of my colleagues have questions for the superintendent, appropriate for open session? Hearing none, excuse me. At this time, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. We appreciate your attendance. We appreciate your support for Anson County Schools, but I need to have a motion to go back into closed session for matters related to personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one, four, three, three, one, eight, eleven, A six. I have a motion, second. Ms. Pratt, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of returning to closed session, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries and we are returning to closed session. Once again, thank you so much for coming out tonight.